Good morning, and I want to welcome you all to the December the 10th regular session of the Commissioners' Court. Our Commissioners' Court is open to the public and may also be streamed on Viva YouTube. To stream the meeting following the Commissioners' Court livestream, hop along on the county's website, huntcounty.net. At this point in time, I would -- my name is Philip Martin, I'm Commissioner of Precinct Three, I'm the Commissioner, Judge Paul Timm of the county. At this point in time, may I ask Commissioner Hutchins to say a prayer, please?
Please join me in prayer. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather together to serve our community and ask that you would be with us and give us wisdom that everything we say and do would be pleasing in your sight and righteous, and that we'd have a blessed time of fellowship as well. It's in your name that we pray, amen.
Shall we say a pledge of allegiance to the US State Flag? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, the state flag, honorable Texas flag, a pledge of allegiance to the Texas state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. I do call this our December the 10th Commissioners' Court to order a roll call. We have Commissioner Hutchins, Commissioner Monroe, Commissioner Harrison. At this time, we do have the minutes of November the 26th, 2024, of the regular session. Do I have a motion and second in reference to?
So moved.
Second.
I do have a motion and a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. Minutes of December the 4th, special session, in reference to the minutes, I have these minutes before you. Is there a motion and a second to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. Public testimony, citizens are invited to address the Commissioners' Court on topics not already scheduled for a public hearing. Public testimony may be given by emailing, public comment at huntcounty.net. The public will be permitted to offer public input by the presiding officer during the meeting and recording. The telephone video meeting will be made and will be available to the public in accordance with the Open Meeting Act upon written request. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by some other course of response. Do we have anybody that would like to come before the Commissioners' Court? Do we have anybody online? At this time, we're going to take up old business on action items, which there is none, so we'll go on and move to new business in reference to the consent calendar. We do have the consent calendar in front of you, and in reference to the consents calendar, all listings are considered to be routine by the Commissioners' Court and will be enacted by one motion. Do I have a motion to accept consent?
So moved. Second.
I do have a motion and a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. We move on to action items. Basically, we have approval of accounts payable, which I will make a motion to approve accounts payable.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes. Approval of line item transfers, I have, do I have a motion and a second in reference to approval of line item transfers?
So moved.
Second.
I do have a motion and a second. The motion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes. We do not have any approval of budget amendments, am I correct? We do have, good enough, I have budget amendments in front of you. Do I have a motion and a second in reference to approval of budget amendments?
So moved.
Second.
I do have a motion and a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes. Approval of payroll and personnel, do I have a motion in reference in favor?
So moved.
Second.
I have a second and also a motion. May I, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. I'm going to talk for a second. We have an item on number one, approval of inscription of Greenville Police Officer Cooper Dawson. It's information on the Hunt County Law Enforcement Officer's memorial. Cooper Dawson will be the 12th member of Hunt County law enforcement that has died in the line of duty for the citizens that they have protected. We pray for his family, we pray for our loss. It's our loss, not just the families. And this was, came about in 2005 and 2006, and that memorial is out there at the Sheriff's Office. And may I ask you this right here, Sheriff? Y'all have a, basically a law enforcement, y'all have a law enforcement, basically where we go and honor these people, and could you give us some dates on that? And also, I'm asking you to come up and talk in reference to this, please.
I don't know the exact dates on that. In reference to Officer Dawson, I've already made contact with the company, it's already set up, and come out and do this. It had his name added to the memorial, it's taken care of, we appreciate. I may have put the cart before the horse, but I knew the Commissioners was definitely in the board of this, so it did affect that his name will be placed there. And, correct?
I want to say this right here, I appreciate the work that you did in the follow-up in reference to your in Betty Oxford. I do appreciate it, and also this Commissioners' Court does. We thank you for assisting in reference to that.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you. Approval of inscription of Greenville Police Officer Cooper Dawson, information on Hunt County Law Enforcement Officer Memorial. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? The motion carries. May God bless him.
Philip, we also need to make an announcement to keep Terrell PD's families over there dealing with that tragedy, and their thoughts and prayers as well.
Yes, sir. Did y'all hear that all right? We pray for his family also.
Can we have a moment of silence?
Yes, sir. Moment of silence, please, Philip.
Yes, please. Shall we bow? Item number, action number two.
Pardon? If I may, I just want to say to the public that these are reminders that we need to be supporting our law enforcement personnel at all time, all year, in prayer, however we may, but certainly in prayer for their protection. This is a reminder that it is an inherently dangerous job, and there's a, they're potentially sacrifice, every time they go to work, they are potentially sacrificing everything. So they need our prayers, they need our support. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Action item number two, extension of the school resource officer contract between the Hunt County Sheriff's Office and Bowles ISD in the 2025 to 2026 school year, extending original contract dated December the 13th of 2022 and extended as of January the 9th of 2024. Sheriff, would you please, do you have anything in reference to this to say? Is that mic on right there?
We got it. Actually, three schools have it, I'm looking for y'all, it's not covered with an officer. Short.
Let me just talk a little louder. They can't hear you.
These two schools that we're covering now, they did not have the resources to completely have their own police department, which is Bowles and Campbell. We stepped out and came to an agreement with them and a contract to where they pay part, and then we, the county pays the other part, and we have officers in both schools for the children's protection, and we want to extend these out. This program seems to be working really well, and we do not want to leave any school at all if we can unprotected this time, okay? Thank you.
What he's not saying basically is that he came before the Commissioners' Court requesting this back in 2022, and we appreciate him diligently going out in reference to seeking this and trying to combine this. We had two of them involved, just like he said, as far as Bowles, Oldham, and Campbell. And this is a good thing. Here's a lot of the problem referenced, they make this state law, but then they forget the funding, and that's what has hurt. And from your information, these two schools are basically doing the good to stay open, so we're very proud, and thank you. Do I have a motion in reference to item number two?
So moved.
Second.
I do have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. We go on to item number three, and this is the extension of the school resource officer contract between County Sheriff's Office and Campbell ISD for the 2025 to 2026 school year, extending original contract dated December the 13th, 2022, as an extension on December the 27th, 2023. Sheriff, would you like to come up here and say anything in reference to this one? And like I say, we appreciate y'all working with each other and reference this. Do I have a motion and a second in reference to item number three?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. Item number four, and this is a very big thing in reference to it, approval of police and fire radios purchase agreement with L3 for $967, $905 for ARPA money purchase agreement approved on December the 4th, 2024. This has already been completed, basically, back in December 4th, this was put forth to do so. Do I have a motion and a second to approve?
So moved. Second.
I do have a second, motion and a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes. Item number five, approved two installation and maintenance contracts with InterCounty Communications Incorporated for $47,735 and $14,630 related to installation of police and fire radios for MEL3 inclusive of ARPA money purchase agreements approved on December the 4th, 2024, and approved order for discretionary exemption under Texas Local Government Code, Section 262.024A2. And this is Daniel Ray. Aaron, do you need to come up here and say anything, please, sir?
Don't really need to add anything to what you stated there, other than the fact that the discretionary exemption is something that the Commissioners' Court can vote on. It's in there as far as the competitive bidding requirements of the local government code. There are certain things that the Commissioners' Court can vote on that to have the discretionary exemption, one of those things is public safety, and so this program obviously has been ongoing. ARPA funding is now coming into play, and slowing it down at this point to go out for bids and everything is something that would obviously impede public safety, and so your vote is to just invoke that discretionary exemption, and it's already built into the law.
Did you say we have to put that in the motion aspect of it?
It's already there.
Yes, sir.
Discretionary exemption, the language is already there.
Good enough, thank you, sir. Item number five, do I have a motion and a second in reference to this?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? The motion carries. Item number six, approved radio purchase agreement for additional police and fire radios for MEL3, not included in ARPA spending, for $1,270,413.15. An approved order for discretionary exemption under Texas Local Government Code, Section Daniel Ray or Aaron, would you like to say something in reference to this, please?
This is obviously the largest part of the 1.03 million that was worked out last or a couple weeks ago. It's the exact same exemption, the 262.024A2, that you can invoke as a Commissioners' Court for discretionary exemption to go outside of the competitive bidding requirements of the local government code.
Yes, sir, thank you. And also, I want to add to this, the line item 45.631.6500.411 will be the line item in reference to capital improvement, is where the money that this will be funded out of. Do I have a motion and a second in reference to item number six?
So moved. Second.
I do have, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? The motion does pass. I'm going to read line item number seven, and then I'll ask, public hearing in action on adoption of Texas Tax Code, Chapter 312, tax abatement agreements, and Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 381, Freeport agreements, between Hunt County, Texas, and 400 Maple Street LLC, EG4 Electronics LLC, Outback Power LLC, and Big Battery LLC in Hunt County, within the Knight Street reinvestment zone on property described as all those certain lots, tracks or parcels of land situated in Hunt County, Texas, and owned by Hunt CAD parcel ID 37623, whose address is 400 Maple Street, Hunt County, Texas, 75428. Bonnie Hunter is the Executive Director of the Commerce and Economic Development Corporation, and at this time, it's, I'm going to introduce, and then we're going to have an open public hearing. May we go on and have her get up and speak first, and then have the open public hearing, please? And if you will, let us know who's with you. Thank you.
Thank you. I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay. Good morning. I'm Bonnie Hunter with the Commerce EDC, and I have with me here today, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I have Brian Foley, who was here back in October with me, and also Marshall Nipert. And Brian is with 400 Maple Street LLC, and EG4 Electronics, which is now going by Solar 76. EG4, they have transitioned over to a new name for the 400 Maple Street facility, the company that's going in there. So Solar 76, formerly known as EG4 Electronics. And then Marshall Nipert is with Outback Power and Big Battery LLC. So both of these gentlemen are here today. If you have any specific questions on any of these four companies. Back in October, I came before you to talk about the companies and give you a little bit of background. They will be moving into the property located at 400 Maple Street. It's a 300, almost a 310,000 square foot building that has been virtually vacant since 2013. Bringing new revenue and jobs to our community is very important for Commerce, and these gentlemen and their companies are doing just that for us.
Bonnie or Brian, if y'all want to give an update, I know y'all have been doing some work in the buildings, put a lot of stuff into it already, so if you want to give any kind of updates on that, here's your chance.
Works right now. Testing, okay.
If I may, why don't we have an open meeting at this point in time? That way, if there's anyone else that I'd have to say, so we're in an open public hearing. Please, go on, please.
First, thank you for being here today. Just a quick update, so the companies that are in there, we have roughly 20 employees already working there under our temporary CO. We should get the full CO in January, it looks like. We have full approval from our lender, from our CDC with the SBA, and we hope to close on that facility next week, and in doing so, continue the progress that we've made. We have a $5.1 million budget for the facility. We've put in close to $3 million already. We have manufacturing lines that started producing last week, and we have some really neat things that we've signed some agreements this last couple weeks with a couple of multinational public companies that we haven't announced yet, but that'll bring more to the facility. We expect to have probably 45 to 50 people by the end of January, and likely hire another 80 throughout next year. Could be more than that, but that's where we're at. Any questions?
Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this point in time? This is a public hearing, please.
This is Marshall Nipert with Outback Power and Big Battery.
Good morning, Mr. Commissioner. It's on, it's dead.
Just talk up for you.
I want to hear, so how did you get it up? So, Big Battery is a company that was originally incorporated in California. We opened, we reincorporated in Texas earlier this year, and most of the generous incentives and ways it brought us, we hired about 12 employees to date. We expect that number to multiply by about five in the next 12 to 18 months. And we also purchased Outback Power from a company in Washington, and we are relocating that into this facility also, and that has a few employees on its day. Those companies, the Big Battery is planning on bringing battery assembly, including robotic combination, into the building, and Outback Power is, as Brian mentioned, is assembling inverters for home solar, so it just started last week. And we will be ramping up those operations, and the extent of what we migrate from California will depend on incentives that you guys are going to grant to us. Thank you.
Is there any other statements? Anybody else? I'd like to say this right here, I'm very excited about it, and I know y'all are, when a group of people can get together and go this route. Basically, I am here to advise you that we do have policies, rules, and regulations that this Commissioners' Court has set up in reference to abatements, and also Freeport, in which this is a good thing for the community, and this is a good thing for the people, completely. And I thank y'all for coming before this. If there's no other, in reference, any other discussion, then we'll close that public hearing at this time, okay? Item number seven, like we talked about right here, I'd like to find out, do I have a motion and a second in reference to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes, and congratulations, and thank y'all for being here.
Bonnie, if you'd like to get the stuff over to Becky, she can get it signed after court. Perfect. Thank y'all again.
Item number eight, we have a film license agreement with Bankhead Production LLC to allow filming on the property owned and maintained by Hunt County. This has, Aaron, do you have anything that you want to talk about? But also, I'd like to bring Commissioner Harrison in to anything that he has desired to say on this also, please.
Well, real quick, a little background of this, and then I'll look there and speak to it. Three or four months ago, we were approached, Daniel was about a film crew wanting to do some filming in Hunt County, got in contact with me. We've located the scenes or the locations that they wanted to use. They were actually in Commerce yesterday, at Rosemount Cemetery. The cemetery board allowed them to come in and use the cemetery to film some scenes. There was probably 75 or 80 people on scene yesterday, which in the end will, you know, boost economy a little bit. They went and ate out, such. They're in Commerce yesterday. The scenes that's before you today is, one of them's going to be on a dirt road that they're going to use. It will be a chase scene slash crash scene. Everything should be in town within the next couple of days from Los Angeles, the stunt cars and so on. And then the other scene will be a, on an oil sand road, asphalt road, where they will be doing a police chase on as well. They are required, as if y'all can tell through their agreement, to have law enforcement on site. I will say, if anybody has asked about this, or they have, these roads will not be closed down during a very long duration. It will be five, 10 minutes at a time, they'll open it back up. This will not be any kind of movement on the county roads, and they will be required to do any cleanup, any hazmat, anything like that that may take place. They're required to fix all of that, and obviously, they were required to have an insurance policy listing Hunt County on it as well, which they've provided late last night to us. This is an agreement, they're using some locations, the courthouse and such, in Rockwall County. This is a, an agreement kind of based off of that, that Daniel and Aaron's been working with. Other than that, that's really all I've got. Aaron, you got anything to add?
Not really. That's pretty much, that's some of it. The off-duty deputy or police officer, law enforcement that'll be on scene will be able to handle that traffic control, even for those short times, if you have somebody who's authorized to shut those roads down for something like this.
And I do want to thank you and Daniel Ray in reference to this agreement very thorough. I appreciate that. Is there any other discussion?
I'm kind of curious what movie or show it is, but...
I can get with you offline.
Okay.
They've, they've kind of got an NDA as far as the movie title right now.
Gotcha.
I will say, it's, it's not Farmer John shooting a movie scene in his backyard, it's a pretty big production movie, so. Kind of entertaining, you know, that during the movie credits, whatever, Hunt County's going to be listed on there, City of Commerce will be as well for some credits, so. There's some other things we're going to work on down the road and bring back to the court relative to shooting movies in Hunt County.
Very cool.
Do I have a motion that we enter into this agreement with Bankhead Production LLC to allow filming on property owned and maintained by Hunt County?
Make the motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor, say aye. I have a motion and a second. Those in favor, say aye. Those against? The motion passes. Item number nine. The request to construct electrical power distribution facilities which will be in the right-of-way of County Road 3592 and Precinct 2 under normal stipulations. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion. We approve this construction under normal stipulation?
Second.
I do have a motion and a second. Those in favor, say aye. Against? The motion passes. Item number 10. The request to construct electrical power distribution facilities which will be in the right-of-way of County Road 3592 and Precinct 2 under normal stipulations. Do I have a motion and a second?
Make a motion. We approve this construction under normal stipulation and correction at County Road 2592.
Second.
I do have a motion and a second. Those in favor, say aye. Those against? The motion passes. Item number 11. The request for permission to do work within the county right-of-way along County Road 3416. We will install fire posts approximately seven foot inside the eastern right-of-way of County Road 4216 and Precinct 4 under normal stipulations. Do I have a motion and a second?
Make a motion to approve this on County Road 4216?
Second.
I do have a motion and a second. Those who are in favor, say aye. Those against? The motion passes. This right here, number 12 item, I'm going to have you come up and I, this is the replant of Lot 22B and 23 in High Heels Acres. But this is a replant of a primary. Am I correct? Or preliminary?
Yeah, this is a replant of a recorded plat. This was actually also granted a variance by the Commissioners Court a month or so ago. So this is the continuation of what y'all gave the variance on.
May I ask you this right here? Since this is a replant of a final preliminary, a preliminary, do we have to have a public hearing in reference to it? Thank you. Go on.
Other than the, what was allowed in the variance meets all the subdivision requirements?
The replant of Lot 22B and 23 in High Heels, I open this for a public hearing at this time. Is there anybody desires to speak out or talk in reference to this? Do I have anything? We do not have any response in reference to it. Therefore, we will close the public hearing. Item number 12, the replant of Lot 22B, 23 in High Heels Acres, Precinct 2. Do I have a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor? Those against? The motion does pass. Item number 13. The replant of Sandy Creek Phase 1 in Precinct. There is a correction in reference to the agenda. It's not Precinct 3. It'll be Precinct 2. Would you go in and respond to us in reference to this, Ryan?
Yeah, and this is actually a replant of lots 1, 2, and 3 in Sandy Creek Phase 1. So that's just so that you know what lots are being replanted. It meets all the requirements.
Okay, in reference to this, we need to have a public hearing in reference to a replant of a final plant. I will in having a public meeting, hearing at this time. Are there any response, anything needs to be said? I will close the public hearing. Basically, the replant of Sandy Creek Phase 1 in Precinct 2. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
I do have a motion and a second. Those in favor, say aye. Those against? The motion does pass at this time. If I may, Aaron, do we have any need in reference to executive session? Goodness. If there's not any other business at that time, basically. Does anybody like to say anything? I do commence saying we're adjourned to this meeting of the Commissioners Court December the 10th. Thank you for coming.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yeah, we need to vote on it.
Pardon?
I need a motion in this.
I'll make a motion.
Do I hear a motion? I apologize.
So moved. Second.
I do have a motion. We're adjourned at this time. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No? We are adjourned at this time. Thank you. Actually, it's in the image bottom. In the image. Wait a moment. Executive, in the image bottom line.